Sorry for making you wait. We apologize.
Yeah, sorry.
It's in case we need to dial that number.
Okay.
If we're just going to discuss it in our call, then we don't have to do anything.
Okay.
Looking for the agenda with all the notes?
Yes.
Isn't that the very back one?
Is it over there?
No, in your pile. No, this is the very-
This is mine. My notes on that. You can have mine if you need it.
I don't need it.
Oh, that's meeting minutes. That's last meeting minutes.
I don't have mine. I don't need it. Just use mine. If I need it, I'll lean over. I'm fine.
Kristy, you can have hers. You can cheat off of her test.
Yeah, you can have my test. Oh, God, I don't have her test.
I had two copies.
Am I missing it? Did I sit on it?
No, I-
Oh. Mindy's stealing it. Super cool.
I'm like, wait, I had two things and I see only us one thing at her spot.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Perfect. See, that's really helpful.
Yeah. I would expect nothing less, that you of course had it.
Do I have to print it over here?
No. Actually, I have notes myself with my glasses.
All right, is everybody ready?
I'm ready.
Everyone good?
I'm ready.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting into order.
Roll call, we have Josh's absent tonight. Nathan?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
Mindy?
Here.
And Anna?
Here.
He is not with us tonight, also.
Okay. Move on to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. One second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Nay? All right, motion passes. Move on to public forum.
Hello, my name is Jocelyn Spry. I'm the three-six Gilbert coordinator. This is Juliana. She is the Story County manager for Kids Club. We are here representing the Gilbert Kids Club. We have a really, really fun event coming up called Lights On for the Kids. In front of you is a fun invite that the kids decided to make for all of you guys. You just can enjoy it and hopefully come enjoy that night with us. It has our time and what kind of been expect that night. On that orange paper also kind of talks about before and after school events and why they're so important. And then on the backside, it also has some support from our families.
Yeah, so Kids Club is provided by YSS in coordination with the Gilbert School District. And our program runs both at elementary and here at the intermediate school. We are open on our those planned early outs and 12:30 dismissals as well as winter break and spring break. And then we also provide our all-day summer programming during the summer months. And then we are open to kids in kindergarten through sixth grade. And our fees are based on a sliding fee scale. We do also through grant support or donations have tuition scholarships. Our goal is to make the program as affordable for families as we can.
The mission of Kids Club programs to provide a safe nurturing and stimulating environment where children can learn and grow. Kids Club provides an opportunity for families to have their children in a safe environment where they are learning new concepts, exploring ideas, building relationships with peers and adults, and engaging in varieties of physical activities.
Yeah, so the reason we're here tonight is we love to come in October and talk about our event. The kids help us plan it. So they help make the invitations. They picked the theme this year. It's Minecraft. And they also kind of give us ideas for the activities they want to do. So it's very much kid-led and they help us put it on every year. We did, like Jocelyn said, on the flyers, we do have all of our seven Kids Club sites participating. So we have their events on there as well. And just really why we're doing this and to celebrate our after-school programs and their importance to the communities. So yeah, we'd love to see you guys there. It's open to school members, school personnel, community members. So yeah, we'd love to have you come to us. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for us?
Just thank you for being here and offering this. You've been really important to them.
Thank you.
It's great.
And I like that you do this each October. That's great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll be back next.
Was there any other public forum you're aware of?
That is all I have.
Okay. We move on to oral reports.
Okay, we'll start off with announcements and celebrations. And the first celebration that we have, we have Lynn Reed here to talk to us about a wonderful celebration she has.
All right, so I'm here to just kind of give you a recap. I've given you each a flyer for battle of the books. Last year, we had 136 kids that participated between fourth grade through 12th grade. It was the first year we had fourth grade. We had 40 kids in fourth grade that went out. We had two teams that made it to the statewide top 16 and one team that made it all the way to the final four in the fourth grade. Our fifth and sixth grades participated at Ames Public Library. And they are the champions this year for Ames Public Library. The first time ever in the history that Ames Public Library has had the same school win both grade levels. So we were very proud of that. It was our second year that we've had seventh and eighth graders go to the statewide competition. And this year, we brought home the state championship in seventh and eighth grade. So we were very excited about that. Our high school, this was their first year as a recognized club. So we have a president and we have a co-president. They were recruiting as part of the clubs. And it just looks like every year we are continuing to expand. I've had kids and parents emailing me this summer already asking for the list for the competitions. So I think we found something that's a good balance. We do all the practices in the intermediate during tiger time so all kids can participate. Middle school, we do it during lunches. And in the high school, we do it during success time. So they can still have their athletics and participate in their battles. So we just wanted to share our success, though, that we've had for the year.
Are you seeing more kids participate in this than in the past?
Yes, every single year we are seeing more and more teams. I had this year, last year's, I've had one team at the high school. I already have three teams that are registered at the high school for this year.
Wow.
We are seeing, last year I had four seventh and eighth grade teams. It looks like we're probably going to have between six and seven. But incoming sixth grade, because we had success as fifth graders, they all won another chance at it. And the librarian at Ames Public Library said we've never had back-to-back winners. So both fifth grade and sixth grade are like, no, we gotta do this. So I just see it's continuing to roll. Fourth grade, we're going to change up a little bit. I want to do that competition in-house. I just felt they take an online test and only the top 16 teams go to the state. I want to give my fourth graders a bigger experience. So we're going to do just a fourth grade battle in-house as an event that parents can attend at night. And we will crown our own fourth grade champion. And then the next year, fourth grade will go to Ames Public in the next two years. Just so that they all get that opportunity to experience the battle. So that hopefully that can continue to roll over the excitement.
Well, and I'd like to just thank Mrs. Reed for all the work that she does. And then also you can see she has Mrs. Martinek and Mr. Smith at the middle school that supports her as well. But it's her time and energy and the kids, she connects so well with our kids and our kids are excited. And she's their chaperone when they get on the bus to go over there. And she does all the things. So this is possible and it's growing because of her hard work and dedication to our kids and families. So thank you.
That's great. Wonderful success.
Yeah. Our kids love it. It's great.
Did Troy put something out on that on our social media?
Yeah.
Okay.
You bet. Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up I have, we had a great week of homecoming. It's hard to believe that that was almost two weeks ago now. But we had a wonderful week. All of our buildings had so much fun and great success. And so I just want to mention the parade. I did receive a lot of feedback from families that they loved the one o'clock parade. And that it was so much fun to have all the kids in the parade. The pep rallies were a lot of fun. And so we're just, it was a huge success. Of course, we won the game on the football side of things. So that always adds to it. But also having the kids join in at the end of the parade, I think, was a real great highlight. So nothing but positive there, so I wanted to share that. Also, she's not here tonight, but I was going to give a shout-out, still will, that our homecoming king and queen was our very own Bea Dantus, who serves with us as our queen. And Holden Bouchard was our king. So I'm excited to honor them. And then also I had the wonderful opportunity to attend the dance. And the kids were all just really having an outstanding time. They were just all having a lot of fun together, which is wonderful to see. So that was also a success. And then that leads into other successes that I wanted to share is that we had Junior Achievement Biz Town for our middle schoolers last, was that last week? Yes, it was. And just great feedback again. We had lots of parents that went and helped support our kids. And the feedback has been very positive. The kids had a wonderful time. It's a lot of work for the staff. So I want to thank Kristy Danielson, who was kind of, was the lead on that. All the other teachers were involved as well. But it's a lot of work upfront. And then, but once you get there and the kids really get in the group of what they get to apply to real-world situations, I think it's a wonderful experience for them. I don't know if you had any pieces you want to share?
No, did you? Anybody else go?
I didn't go. I saw, I heard a lot about it.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
I mean, and I, I don't know how to put in the words, but it was the most well-organized chaos I've ever seen. It was so, because there was so much going on. There were so many kids, so many different duties, that it was just constant. But yet, everybody kind of knew what they needed to do and how to do it. And it was just so well-organized, both from the Gilbert side and then the Junior Achievement Group was awesome down there. So it was, I didn't know what to expect. When I got there, I was even more kind of confused. But then once it started, it was just perfect, how it kind of flowed. So I was super, super impressed with it all.
Yes, very, very positive. So, okay, and then that leads into Bea's celebrations. She's not here, but I bet if she was here, she would probably say the following things. So first, I wanted to say, last Friday, we had our safety, fire safety event for our kids. And that was a partnership with Gilbert and Franklin Township Fire Department as well as the Ames Fire Department. There was lots of great photos online, giving our kids a wonderful experience. So I'm very grateful to those organizations to help us there. And then our, also wanted to mention, this month, October, is Principal Appreciation Month. So we're very grateful to all of our principals. We also have a day recently that was our instructional coaching day. We appreciate all that they do. So lots of successes and wonderful things happening there. And then our sports. Great things are happening also in our sports world. As many of you know, our football team is 7-0. So that's very exciting, which is the first time since 1979 we've been 7-0. So that's very exciting. We're hoping lots of people can come out. It's a home game this Friday night against North. And so we're hoping to have lots of people at this game and at our next game as well. We are also, on October 22nd, a celebration is that Gilbert is hosting the state qualifying meet for cross-country at Iowa State. And that's a real honor to be a part of that. Ian Smith is heading that up. And as always, he does a phenomenal job. And the volleyball team is having wonderful success. Tuesday night, tomorrow night is senior night, so they'll be honored there. They're currently second in the conference, so we're excited about that. We had three swimmers in the Ames Swim team, so we're happy and excited about that. And then we just got word that our cross-country, the girls' cross-country team just this afternoon won the conference title. And the boys' cross-country team also won the conference title. And we had Logan Blake won the boys' individual. He's the champion. And Kira Anderson is the girls' individual champion. So Ian sent me this text. It says, "We swept all the individual and team gold." So there's some good success there. And then the last piece of celebration in the sports world, and I probably have forgotten some because there's so many good things happening, is that for the first time in school history, we have an all-state cheerleader. So Malia Higgins has been given that honor, so we're excited about that, too. So great academic things happening and great sports and great community things. And so across the board, just good things are happening. That concludes the celebrations that I have.
I'll give a quick shout-out to the band, too. They walked in the hot parade and they killed it that night at the football game.
Yes, they did.
They were awesome.
They certainly did, yes.
This Friday, it's the all-band, like seventh, eighth through high school.
Extravaganza.
Friday night, so.
That's good. That'll be a lot of fun.
School and high school all together.
Yeah, it's fun to see all the kids out there. So that's good. Good to shout-out to the band, too. Yeah, lots of wonderful things, so. Okay.
All right, thank you. Yeah, moving on to administrative reports. Back to you.
Yes, okay. Well, and Gail might jump in here, too. Well, there she is. So this is the certified enrollment report. The good news is we are up in students, so we're very happy about that. And Gail, do you want to talk more about that? Do you have something specific there?
So just to explain what this is, this is just a summary and it's a draft. It's not finalized until the 15th of the Saturday. So the first row, number one, is basically our resident students attending our district. And so we're up 16.9. And then the second row is resident public students attending another school. So it would be considered open enrolled out. So that went down. What we don't know is, at this, is did some of those move into our district and in line one? Are they the same students? We don't know. Until we, but, so, but net, we, you know, have a net there. So our expenditures will actually go down for open enrollment for tuitions. And then if we jump down to line eight, nine here, this is open enrolled in, and that also went up 13. So our revenue for tuitions will go up compared to what it was last year. And the, what we consider our, you know, our money line, which is our, for our, the cost per student and our revenue on actual enrollment is line seven, and we only went up 5.48. But with, our revenue will increase on the tuition side for open enrollment. So we won't see it on here. And it's mainly because our resident students here on line two went down. So, but in the end, what we want to look at is this total school age students provided instruction in our district. That means we used to say students in seats is at 29.38. So which were-
We're right in, yeah. 29.30, right there. So that's a good number. We'll take it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Different buckets, but students in our seats.
Yeah, point people.
Yep.
Residents and open enrollment.
Yep, very good.
Do we know, I know we opened up kindergarten a little bit more this year. Do we know how many open enrolled kindergarten students we took this year? If you don't have the answer, that's fine.
Yes, I think I do. Just, if you just-
It should be on the-
Open enrolled in, if that's the question, is in kindergarten is 20.
Okay. So that's about, okay.
Yeah. And then the report that we look at breaks down what districts they come from. And Ames, we swap with Ames, right? We have students that come here from Ames and we have students that go to Ames, so.
That is very positive.
Yes, we are. Yep.
But that's a big number, 20.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is.
It's good to get them in kindergarten, too.
Yeah, but I just, I mean, I, I think it also goes to show, again, not that 30 kids, it's great, but we took 20 kindergarten. You take that off, we're only up nine kids. So you keep hearing all this growth in these houses, but we're just not getting a lot of kids.
It's true.
And the other place we need to look at, because the kindergartners coming in and the large classes of kids.
Going out.
Right.
Yep.
Well, and for example, in first grade, just to put that, the open enrollment in is 23.
Oh, wow.
Mm-hmm. So you can see, you know, and then it drops down, second grade, third grade, 13, 13, and 12. So it kind of, you know, but those are the two big numbers up front. So overall, our open enrollment, just so you're aware, is 177 students.
178.8.
Yeah.
So that 0.8 kid, I feel bad for.
Yeah.
So in the open enrollment, we do have home, you know, homeschool kids that are in. That's from where you get the points.
Points, yeah.
It could be 0.1, 0.3, or a total of 0.4, depending on if it's activities, academics.
Well, that's better than last year.
Yes, it is. We'll take it. Because my colleagues across the districts are all looking, many, most, I should say, most, not all, at low numbers, not growth. And if it is, it's like one or two or, other than like big, you know, like Waki or something, you know, far away from here. But neighboring districts are seeing-
In all sizes.
Yes.
Even large districts and even small districts.
Yep.
Yep.
Hopefully, if we can capture them, those open enrollments in kindergarten, first grade.
Yes.
And make a really good impression and they have a good experience here, that they'll want to continue to stay.
Yes.
And we can add that section, you know, going for it, especially because we're opening up that space in the elementary.
Yes.
We'll have the room to add more sections, too.
And that really is, my experience has been that that's really what you want to do, is bring in as many as you can in kindergarten first. Because once you're there and you're established with the community, you want to stay, you know? And so we hope to see that, so. But good news for tonight, we'll take it.
Good news.
Okay, and then that leads me into- Oh, department, yes, thank you. And you have your list there of all the things that have been going on. And I really appreciate how much you all appreciate that because it's also a little bit reflective for us to sit down and go, oh, wow, ooh, I did that, too. Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. And those are just the highlights, and I know everybody does that. The one I want to highlight on, for tonight, is Jason Holden. Yep, there he, he heard me there. He does so much, and I just wanted to say thank you to him. One of the things that he did is the Department of Education, the state of Iowa Department of Education was here. And for an entire day, their meeting lasted in the high school library. And Jason was the support on the IT and spent his entire day making sure that everything went well. And did an outstanding job. And they could not stop complimenting how helpful he was and, and just how confident they were and the things that were done. And so I just really want to thank Jason for that. And then also, of course, all the other things. I love that they put the tickets up there that they take care of. I know he does that. And also AJ supports him in that. So many, many things that he handles and does it all with grace and quiet behind the scenes. So thank you, Jason. A big shout-out to you.
Shout, Jason. So Ian made note to you of the scoreboard. It looked really nice.
Yes.
On homecoming night, so.
Yes. And there's more to come with the scoreboard. Because we really, that finalized, went up and was working Wednesday or Thursday afternoon. And he had to quickly be trained on some things. But it does a whole lot more than what it did Friday night. And we will be working with students to put students in charge and things like that to kind of, it has capacity beyond anything we've done before. Like, you know, if somebody-
Fireworks.
Makes a touchdown, then they can hit a button and some reel will come up of that student or things like that, you know, or that athlete. So I think there's a lot more fun things to come with that scoreboard. So, yeah, we're grateful for that as well.
Shoot fireworks on the back.
Yeah. Mental wellness?
Mental wellness, okay. They're very exciting, wonderful presentation today at the high school. We had, just, I hate her name. Emma, thank you. Emma, I won't say her last name correctly. I'm sure Beno or Benau, Benai. She is a former varsity cheerleader who survived a suicide attempt at the age 16 and left her paralyzed. She came today, spoke to the entire high school. She also has, in partnership with the other high schools throughout Story County, she's going around to all the high schools. She also has a film that's coming out about her journey and about the decision, what led her to that decision, and her recovery from that decision. And really feels strongly that her mission now is to share her story with students and help them understand that process. I had the opportunity to attend today. And it, in my opinion, I'd like to probably ask kids, but it was outstanding. She was very direct with the kids about, you know, what to do if you're feeling anxious or depressed and who to reach out to. And, and so she shared her story a little bit. Then the kids were able to watch. The movie is a full screening coming up this Friday over at Iowa State. But she shared 20 minutes of this film, and which, again, talked about her journey. And then after that, the kids could anonymously put in questions that she could answer. And so then she sat on stage and there were some very specific questions that kids asked that I thought were very thoughtful, about what do you do if you are worried about somebody? What if you're worried about a sibling? You know, and she had really great, I thought, answers and, and really was relating to the students. You could see they were really kind of leaning in to the questions that were coming up from their, from their peers. So it was a wonderful event. And I want to thank the counselors at the high school as well as Mr. Egan. He also communicated that out to families ahead of time. So families could have a conversation, decide if it was right for them. They could opt out if they chose to for the student. And then kids left that event and went back to success center. So they had an adult to check in with and check, you know, to have conversations with before they left for the day. And then, of course, will be, everybody will be available tomorrow and whenever that we need them. So it was wonderful and I really appreciated hearing Emma's story. And really, she's working hard on, you know, removing the stigma around depression, anxiety. And, and what she talked about, I'll just, sorry, kind of go on, but is that she said, I was the kid that somebody said would never do anything. She said, "I was a cheerleader, I was popular, I had kids, I was always smiling, I was happy as can be," you know? And she made the choice, and, you know, fortunately, it was a, it didn't, didn't work, you know? She's still here and, and she's really grateful that she's still here. So, and now she's sharing her message. So it was wonderful and nice to have her.
How did we get connected with her? How did that come about?
They reached out, this is the, I'm going to say it wrong, Red Shirt Foundation. She's connected with the Red Shirt Foundation. So the Red Shirt Foundation reached out to all the high schools and said, "We're coming to Story County and we'd like to include as many high schools as we can." And so had conversations and that's how that happened, so.
Okay, thank you. Board reports, policy committee update.
I know you're sitting on the edge of your seats for this one. We, do-do-do-do, completed our review of the 400 series, which is all about employees. We've done that pretty much all year long. We've been working on those. We also reviewed the Quarter Three Primer from IASB. And our next meeting is this Friday, and we're starting on the 500 series, the students.
Okay. The Iowa School Board Association Annual Convention is November 19th through the 21st. Anything we need to discuss there?
I have Andrew, Nathan, Josh, and Kristy going. Josh is just attending the Wednesday.
Okay, as the delegate? As the delegate, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, very good. Moving on to the 2025 School Board Elections.
We have four candidates. And they are Joshua Bennett, Josie Gray, Dakota Hope and Andrew Thompson. We have two seats available and there are two positions for your terms. So November 4th is the election day.
And I will share there that I did have a couple of people ask me if we were going to have any sort of forum. I will tell you that in the past, and Gail, you'll correct me if I don't get this quite right, is that in the past, usually it was, I believe, the League of Women Voters-
Yep.
-that reached out to us. And then they would sort of sponsor and run that, and we just gave the space. We have not heard from anyone yet. And so that would be up to, it would be us running that. It would be up to another organization if they wanted to put together some sort of forum. So just so you're aware, in case anybody asks you in the community, we haven't had anyone come forward for that. And if they did, we would absolutely provide the space, so.
Okay, good to know.
Does Troy plan an interview? Is there anything from a school standpoint that we're going to do?
The only, no. The only thing we've done from the school standpoint is that we asked the candidates to fill out a little bio and answer a few questions. And that's been posted on our website. So if people wanted to read more, they could go online and do that.
Yep, that's up there now.
Yes.
Yeah, I was trying to locate it.
It's right there in the bottom. Go down the red arrow there, School Board Candidates. If you click on that.
Right underneath the red box.
Under the red buttons.
Oh.
Click there.
Under the two red boxes.
Yes, the red arrow and that takes you to PGI, so. Yeah, I was looking that earlier, so. There's all four candidates on there, once again, Troy did an excellent job as he always does.
Very nice.
Yes. Okay. So then we have the AEA Board Member Election Information, District Five for a two-year term.
Anybody's interested, go free to have, uh, your name written in the comments. As a school board member, you're.
Yeah, not interested, do you need anything?
I'm providing the information.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we just put it out there.
All right.
Providing the information.
Right, very good. Uh, all right, facilities reports and update.
All right. We got to just take a tour of the primary building, which is moving along nicely as far as the construction update goes. Um, for some of our earlier sequences, we are into finishes right now. Case work for sequences one through three starts delivering this week, in fact, tomorrow. Um, that's a big finish step as we move through kind of just the final touches for some of those neighborhoods. Um, we'll continue work in what's more of the common space, cafeteria, the gym, um, as we work our way towards that into the building finishes, so things are going well in the interior. Um, exterior wise, we had a big goal of wrapping up a lot of the phase one, which phase one would be the building and the immediate surrounding area. Phase two then is the existing school and the site paving that'll go in there. Um, for phase one exterior work, we wanted to button that up before winter hit, um, which they were able to do between the sidewalk extensions, the, um, grass seating, some of the landscaping does, things like that, so things are moving well at the primary right now. Um, for our second project, the high school project, um, our big push right now is getting the science rooms done in area B before, uh, the end of December, which we're moving along nicely, um, we got things back on track here last week. Um, they are painting right now, ceiling started going in this morning, um, and casework delivers on Wednesday. So we'll have a lot of folks working with each other inside those spaces, but, um, I believe we plan to turn that over substantially complete on December twelfth. Um, for the rest of the areas, the classroom addition and the gym addition, um, we're doing a lot of roof work right now, the roof is just about buttoned up in the gym locker room area. They'll move on to the classrooms and once the roof is on, we're able to pour our slab. Reason for that is we don't wanna pour our slab first like in some other projects as it connects to the existing building, creating a problem for water intrusion if you don't have your roof on. Um, so we're working through that before the floor goes in, once that's in, um, it'll, it'll look like very fast interior pro- um, progress again between framing in the classroom side and CM in the locker room side. So these are going well at high school. District office, another one, we have a end date coming up soon. Um, as of right now, our target is December with a move in right after the first of the year after furniture is installed. Um, on the interior side, we are just about through painting, um, ceilings are going up and they'll start with casework next week, um, which will then lead them to flooring and will be in a really good spot in the interior. On the exterior side, um, the hardy board siding is complete, um, they're working on starting to paint that here this week. And then you'll note that our cider for the bump outs around the windows should show up this week to put in the aluminum siding that goes around those for the accent tops along the building. Um, roof paint also occurring here this week as well, so. Things are going pretty good at all three projects right now. We're in a big drive, um, for those that were able to attend the facility committee meeting, um, we're in a big drive at the schematic design level for the intermediate and middle school projects right now. So our team's into estimating on those, the design team's off and running, just continuing on the DD set. Um, but overall, things are, things are looking pretty good. Um, right after I tell you things look good, we'll go through the long list of change orders we have. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review these, but I'll just kinda run, run down the summary document that we included. Um, the first one, um, is a Gage Brothers change order. So this is a credit, um, that is being offset by ads for contractors that had to, um, either increase their time on site or materials on site as it related to some of the delays or, um, the drop in quality or non-conforming panels we had show up on site. So that is a credit change order. Um, that money just doesn't get put back in contingencies, contingency though. The next one down is US Erectors. The large majority of the change order that we received that credit for is due to overages, um, that apply to US Erector Scope Works, they had to leave a crane on site, additional man hours, things like that. Um, and then the, the next offset is, uh, PCO one under the land sync change order. That is additional staining work that we ended up, um, coming into an agreement with, with the architect for the gym. Uh, for the most part, the gym where we added some staining to cover some of the quality issues. Um, so that staining was then also paid for by the Gage credit change. Uh, PCO number two for land sync, um, temporary interior conditions, so you'd have like temporary heat, um, humidity control, things like that. You have a choice at the beginning of the project to hold those either as what we call an owner general condition, so a budget we would put together to pay for those costs as a variable cost that comes up, or you include it in the bid just to say temp heat by X contractor, whoever that bid package would be. Um, in our experience, if you include it in the bid set, we're going to receive an abundance of caution by the contractor and, you know, that, that bid is not a, a variable amount. We're going to include a number in their cost to cover temp heat. Um, if you don't use it all, you don't get it back. So we decided to, since we have two superintendents on set, on site under our staff, we decided to include that as variable because we'd have the, um, the man hours to help coordinate that. Um, so the first one you see here, that PCO number two, that's our first hit for temporary enclosure work. Um, so that would be for, um, just areas that aren't in the schedule to be enclosed yet. We would then hire a contractor or a contractor on site to temporarily enclose those before the, the finished work occurs later on in the schedule. So it's not like something got missed, this is just a bunch of, uh, to button up a portion of the building that wasn't meant to be buttoned up yet. Versus as an example, we just walked through and you see the large amount of plastic at the front of the building. We did expect our curtain wall to, to start last week or this week and it's had a delay due to a manufacturer's issue. Um, so that enclosure work you won't pay for because we did plan on having something in place. So that's by the contractor at their cost. Um, next up for the primary would be, uh, construct change order. This just came out as a, um, a PR from the design team, we had to adjust things. I don't know if you remember, our issues with the geothermal field that we have out there for the middle school building wasn't quite positioned in, in place as it was on the plans, um, from that project whenever that was built. Um, so in doing so, we had to relocate the pond we had dug, the future storm pond. Um, so this, this change order takes care of the relocation of that pond they had put in with earthwork and then some erosion control blanket required up until we turn that over here next spring. That changed a bit with that new design. Um, at the bottom of each of these buildings, I did include more or less a contingency performance report. Um, for the primary building, we're about at seventy percent through. Um, for the building itself, in contingency use to be about twenty-five percent. So looking okay at that metric as of right now. Uh, any, I should have paused after each of these, but any questions on anything covered so far? Okay.
And I'd just love to see the twenty-five percent contingency at seventy percent completed.
That's good, that is good. And, you know, it, anything can happen, but at the beginning of the projects is, is when you do tend to realize some of the larger change orders. Um, guys are getting their hands wrapped around maybe an inconsistency in the design or an unforeseen, a large unforeseen condition with your earthwork. That's one of the larger change orders we had to process early on in the project was, was due to over X or, you know, the, the rain, you know, more rain than, than typically expected, things like that. As we get on the interior side of the building, they do tend to decrease in size, some of those will be an owner directed change. We'll say, hey, this came up, you know, what do you think owner to accommodate this, oh, well add that. You know, it's not a building wide add, it's an add for that spot. So we do tend to see them get smaller. Um, fingers crossed, we'll just continue this trend, um, and, and manage these as we have. Uh, additions at high school, we've got change order two, this has a few to just talk through here quick. Um, PCO three is a change for design modifications related to some of the ex- exterior. Um, this would be with landscape edging. On the projects with the initial spec, we did have vinyl in there for landscape edging. Um, that, that should have been matching existing, which is a concrete, uh, concrete poured, uh, concrete, uh, landscape edging, sorry, so that was the change from that to concrete. Uh, PCO six says gym interior signage, it was specified as acrylic. Um, after talking with the supplier, there were some concerns with the kickball or basketball making its way up there and hitting that, would it break? Um, it could, uh, so they did provide a change to go to aluminum. Um, so it's a small change just to make all of that signage aluminum instead of acrylic. We had a missing corner guard at the mothers room. Um, this is fairly minor, but, uh, there's some finishing work that occurs at any, uh, drywall corner in an occupied space. Would take a corner guard to just, you know, alleviate any damage in the future. PCO ten, this was, uh, an add change that is somewhat offset by a change we don't have on this list yet. Um, after doing the floor demo for the tile that was in some of the science rooms, when we uncovered that, the concrete and the adhesive had stained it to the point where if we did, those are to be polished in the design. They were to be polished floors. Um, it would not look good based on what we saw under the tile. So we did, did make the determination to move to the VCT, it's almost the same material that'd be like in the corridors, but held up well for chemical resistance, flame resistance, things like that and was also an option that the staff appreciated. Um, so we went from polished to that. So we'll have a polished concrete change that will be a credit from another contractor, All-Star, our concrete contractor. Will provide a, a credit for that here next month. Uh, PCO eleven, this is a weather barrier. Um, if you remember, a few months ago, we processed a change at the high school that was a credit from Grayvaw for the ethos we had on the side of the building to go to brick. This was just a, a discrepancy in the alternates that we pulled levers on at the beginning of the project. It was meant to be brick, we did not recommend pulling the lever as we thought it was moving from brick to ethos and it was a design CM issue. Um, when they processed their credit, they took everything off the side of the building and through unit cost checking and things like that, we did verify, they did take the ethos off, they also took their weather barrier off, but the weather barrier for brick would still be their responsibility. So we're adding this back in so our brick has a we- a weather barrier. Um, so just an anomaly on the change that was previously provided for that one face to facade. And then PCO twelve, this would be bollards added for a lift station. The lift station is a plumbing system that's on the exterior of the building that will allow, due to the slope, the existing slope that's in place at your parking lot, we had to take a sanitary out of the, out of the new building and link up with your existing sanitary. To do that, we didn't have the right slope. So to accomplish that, they install essentially glorified pump. Um, and that pump was a change up front at this project. Um, after talking with the facilities and grounds crew, we determined that with between storm removal and mowing, we missed some bollards here, so these are concrete bollards that will go around that lift station to protect it. So this is the supply of those. Um, as far as budget and schedule performance, the high school, we're calling at about thirty-five percent. In contingency use to be about eighteen percent. Um, this is actually a fairly minor jump from the last position we were at with the high school changes as well. District office, we have one change order. Uh, this is adding a roof curb change. So a roof curb is what a mechanical system will sit on, so whether it's an exhaust fan, a large rooftop unit that would power things like these, anything mechanical that's gonna sit on your roof needs to sit level. Um, this curb allows for that to sit level, the previous, the previous one specified was a flat curb. Your building roof is a metal rib roof, so it's got a profile to the rib. Um, this curb in changing that changes all the curbs to have that same rib profile that they do need. So it's just essentially a change from the designed flat roof, like you'd see at your EPDM at, say, the primary, to then a rib roof curb for all the mechanical equipment around the district office. Um, that we're, we're calling about forty percent for the district office, let's say we're a little further than that. Uh, but contingency use is at twenty-six percent. Again, any, any small change to this one increases that just because it's a small contingency, but we still, um, we're still, um, sitting at a decent amount, thirty-five, thirty-six thousand if these are. Any questions on any of these?
Very thorough explanations, thank you. Yeah, good work, good work.
No notes either, or did you have some notes there?
Notes.
Did you have notes on that or is it all top of your head?
That's all what you have. Yeah, anything, anything that's.
Yeah, he's on it.
That's good, good work.
But when it comes to change orders, we do study those thoroughly. Don't ask me, maybe some other design questions, I might have to refer to the documents.
Uh, all right, any questions, Steven?
I, I do wanna say that every time I give an important statement, it's very meticulous and it's important, so we do appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, so then we'll move to consider approve Gage Brothers Change Order Number One for the Gilbert CSD New Primary Project Deduct for ninety thousand, forty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. All right. Consider approve US Erectors Change Order Number One for the Gilbert CSD New Primary Project Add for seventy-one thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Consider approve Landsec Change Order Number One for the Gilbert CSD New Primary Project Add twenty-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Lindsay? Okay.
Sorry, we're going too fast. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Consider approve Construct Change Order Number Three for the Gilbert CSD New Primary Project Add nineteen thousand, six hundred and six dollars.
I will motion to approve.
Second.
You're gonna have to tell her who it is.
I got it.
Wendy, all right.
I saw, I saw her mouth open.
Uh, all in favor?
It's reading lips.
All opposed? All right. Consider approve RH Grabow Change Order Number Two for the Gilbert CSD High School Project Add thirty-four thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars.
I will motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And passed. Consider approve Pritchard Brothers Change Order Number One for the Gilbert CSD District Office Project Add six thousand, five hundred ninety dollars.
I will motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Consider approve Workspace Quilt for High School Addition Furniture.
Do you want me to pull these up or?
Yeah.
And these, I, if I may, these two have been brought to you, this is the work that we've been doing, um, but they're over my threshold, which is important that you all have a voice on that. But what we did is we worked with CMBA to go through each, each learning space and what it needs. And then the next one we'll come to is also each workspace and what we need for the district office. And so that's, um, what you see here.
Is this all the furniture we need for the high school or would that be more?
Um, I believe this is everything up to this point, is this, yeah, is that right, Steven?
Yeah, there's a small portion of it related to the area B, which is why the order is right now. Instead of the classroom areas, which will be ready next August, but I, I believe to capture discounting, which is based on tiers and order, they include it all.
And I imagine you had a group from the high school come together and.
That's right, so they, yes, and, and what we worked hard on is to standardize, you know, so it's not just, oh, I like tall tables and you like low tables and, you know, so we had to kinda work collaboratively to come up with what works well and, and how to make it consistent in each room. And so, yes, they worked, they did that last spring, so.
Okay, I motion to approve high school furniture.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. All right, any comments on the DO furniture?
No, I mean, we, same thing, we did, we standardized each office, um, to make sure that we all have the same things. Um, also it has the district office with the, uh, dais tables to create the dais and, um, chairs for, and tables for training in those rooms and, um, a little bit of entry, a few pieces of furniture for entry, uh, welcome in the entry area and, um, so it's all there, that should cover all the things. And what's not on here is, I, I think this is a celebration, what's not in here is, uh, any furniture, there's a back patio and, um, we reached out to. and we reached out to Mr. Jones in the high school and it looks like that group, his students will be making two picnic tables to put out there.
Oh, wonderful.
And so they're gonna put those together and make them for us and paint them and and so the furniture that we'll have out there will be student made. So we're hoping that all comes together.
Oh, that's great.
That's not on this list, but it's exciting.
What happens to all the current furniture in the district?
Yeah, we'll be working together, not only with Steven, but just what other needs we have around the district to see can it stay? Does it need to go somewhere else? And we'll be having that same conversation with the elementary. The example that we have is that, like, my current office might become an intervention room and I have a table in there, so that could probably stay. The other example is in the conference room at the elementary. They have a pretty nice long conference table and so we're gonna look at like, okay, who needs that and could that go here somewhere? Maybe they need it over at the middle school, so we're gonna try to spread those things out. If there are pieces of furniture that are just not, not gonna work for us in any other space, then we're looking at you know, putting them up for auction. In the past, we've used GUP deals, but remember we changed the policy. It could be something else, but that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
I will motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steven.
Thank you, Steven. All right, moving on to old business. Second reading of possible action to waive third reading and approve revised board policies. There's a whole list there.
You saw all these last month. This is just second reading. It was mainly going through four hundreds and we pretty much just were working to match like policy and practice in most of these. So no new changes from last month.
Is there a motion?
I will motion to approve. And I will waive the third reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And passed. Okay. Second reading of possible action to waive third reading and approve reviewed board policies. Another group there.
Second look at some of these four hundreds. These, we didn't make any changes to. We literally just reviewed them, so. No change.
I will motion to approve the waived third reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. All right. On to new business. Cell phone tower.
Okay, we had a group approach us about the possibility of a cell phone tower proposal. And I'm gonna let Vic talk about this and let you all discuss any of your thoughts about it. We just didn't want to make any decisions without all of you weighing in and and it doesn't have to be any action tonight if you don't want to, or you could just discuss it, but I'll let Vic take it from here.
All right. We had a group stop in the district office wanting to discuss the possibility of putting a cell phone tower on our property. The area they were interested in is the area south of the high school, just to the south of the soccer field there and the FFA area. You can see that there in the picture. They would put up the cell phone tower and then enter into a leasing agreement with us and then we would receive a monthly income upon completion of the construction. They would have a period of time that they would need access to that area. They suggested two directions. You could see a direct line from the road or a direct line from the FFA area. They would build that. They take care of all of the working through surveying and zoning and soil testing and all of those things and permitting. And then they would put the tower there and we would enter into the leasing agreement with them and receive a monthly payment from them. He asked if it was something we would be interested in. I thought it'd just be best to, you know, throw it out to the board. Dr. T and I discussed it a little bit. There are obviously pros and cons to having it in that location. Yeah, what questions?
Is that land right now being rented out or?
Right now, it is just being farmed by our FFA.
Oh, sure.
But this would be in the farthest southeast corner of that section.
So they would still be able to use it for that?
Yeah.
And this is not within city limits?
My understanding is it is not within city limits. That that section has not been annexed into the city. It's my understanding. But I could be wrong. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
My quick thoughts is fifty years is a long time. I mean, we don't know what we're gonna do with the transportation hub in the next two years. And so as of right now, I just don't know what that land's gonna be used for, let alone in five years or fifty years. So I guess my opinion is let's sit on this maybe for another month. But even so, I have a hard time signing a fifty-year lease for land that we have no idea what the future of Gilbert holds. I mean, we just don't know. And then all of a sudden to put a district, you know, twenty years down the road in a bind where there's a cell phone tower right in the middle of it, I just think that's tough. And twelve hundred bucks isn't a lot of money. I can guarantee you in twenty years, twelve hundred dollars is gonna be pennies.
Well, it increases one percent.
One percent specified.
One percent. Not a lot.
I just think that's, I mean, the difference if it was a smaller lease. And I totally understand why they want a long-term lease, but I just think that puts, our district in a tough situation down the road with who knows what.
When are they wanting an answer from us?
Well, I told the gentleman that we would be discussing and if there was any action would take place at a future board meeting. There could be some things that you've discussed tonight that I could send to him and have him, you know, think about. They would like to, you know, like to have it up and running by as early as late twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven. So it's not too far down the road. Some lead time to build it and do all the surveying and all that work and things like that. So.
Deal, how does that work for money? We get fifteen thousand dollars out of this a year. Where does that money go?
It would, it's rent and so it would go into the general fund. So it would be miscellaneous.
Okay.
But, you know, whenever the word lease comes up, I'm very like, okay, what is, because a lease, we don't want to enter a lease. And I checked into, now, I checked into with allers to make sure and we are not, it will not hurt our current debt obligation because we purchased these acres with cash on hand using savings. Now, if we would have used bond money, then we wouldn't be able to, we would have, we wouldn't be able to enter a payment. But we used cash on hand for the capital, or excuse me, from save to purchase this land. So we're good. The lease has, we have no tax exemption status because we didn't, we don't have any, we didn't use any geo debt on that to purchase it. So we're good there. But the money would be generated and we would.
Good. Okay. Appreciate you have that information in this thread, the email there. I mean, I think that certainly more and more discussion and you can see if this is doable and where's the city boundary and lane boundary, but that is, even the easement itself is, you know, could limit how you use the lane. That's just the tower itself, but the two easements.
I have a little girl, but I don't know if there's research on towers and like what that's happening, you know, it's like in, I think there's some, there's been some studies, like there's some closeups on getting headaches or, you know what I mean? I have no idea. I'd have to look into it, but I just don't know if we'd put a huge tower next to all of our kids eight hours a day, if there would be any residual effects.
Well, and I also think to Andrew's point about, we have not made final decisions, maybe not even preliminary, about where the transportation hub is going to go. So I think that's the other factor here is that as a board, I would think we want to at least know that before we decide about this. And my only other question I have, and I'm not familiar with this type of business, is that are there other opportunities? I mean, this gentleman came to us, but are there other, if we were deciding like, okay, we're gonna open this up and let, are there other companies that say, well, we'll give you this amount and twenty percent increase a year or things like that? I don't know.
What is the size of the tower, Vic? Did they say?
Says the lease area is a hundred by a hundred.
What's the size?
I don't see a tower size.
Again, and again, just being good community stewards, I mean, just east of that's probably gonna be housing someday.
Right.
Whether or not there's school on that land, I mean, again, you're gonna, to me, it just, it's gonna be an eyesore in so many years. You got this cell tower sticking up.
So I think at a minimum, we should punt this at least the next meeting and see what more we know. And if that time, we need more information, we can, if we have more information.
I'm pretty confident when I first arrived here, a group similar, and Andrew would probably speak to this.
But that was a nine-one-one tower. That was more of a community, they needed it from a safety standpoint. I think that's how we were approached.
And they wanted to put it in the northeast corner of the middle school.
Yep.
Way up in the far corner and the city was not really in favor of that at the time, is my understanding.
Yeah, that was, that was a, that was a nine-one-one tower, wasn't it? It was a safety tower. And that was more coming from the county, kind of asking us, hey, from a safety from a, it's perfect. Then all of a sudden, that just fizzled and went away. But that was more from a, it was different than a cell tower. That was the county coming in, I think as emergency management, saying, hey, we need a tower in this area. Your land would be perfect, you know, that. So that was a little different discussion. And I don't, and again, it ended up just fizzling and then going away, but this is, seems a little odd to.
I think we all know the value of that chunk.
Yes.
What potentially going to happen on that side of the road, if we look at what's going on the other side of the road. You know, and that is, as you drive in to Gilbert, that would be one of the first things you could see.
Yep.
You know, that doesn't make it a terrible thing, you know, we all could use our cell phone coverage in our area also. But there's lots of things to consider.
At a minimum, I think we should know what our plans are for the transportation hub before we would tie ourselves down like this.
And I did mention that we are considering building in that, developing in that area. And so that's why he was interested in trying to put it the farthest away from where we might put something. So.
So I think there's some questions, maybe based on what we're hearing from the board, Vic, that we can go back to. One is, to your point, Melissa, you know, and really Andrew, you said that too, like, how close up can we build to it? Like if there was going to be a transportation hub, can it be, you know, a hundred yards to it? Or how close can something else be? Or if there's houses on that other side, what does that look like? I think that that's a good question. I think asking about would they, would they be interested in a twenty-year lease? Like, what does that look like? That might change that a little bit. And then really, I think it's always good to ask people, who's their biggest competitors and talking to that. I mean, I just think, to see if it's still something you're interested in. At that point, we might say, you know what, we're just not interested and that's okay too. So.
And maybe also like, when does he need an answer by? Like, what's his final, I need an answer.
Good to know if other districts have done this also.
Yeah.
That's always a good idea.
Yeah, where else have they approached? Because if he says he needs an answer by October thirtieth, well, that's not gonna happen. Yeah, we're not meeting again. So.
I would also mean, especially if you're watching this meeting, I wouldn't say we're too keen on that. I mean, I'll say for me, out of the chute, I'm not too keen on this. Even with the answers come back, I just think it's, I don't know, we don't need it. It just doesn't seem like it's the right thing to do. So.
Well, and Vic, you provided this gentleman's phone number, but I haven't heard any questions that are urgent or maybe good dialogue. More follow-up is probably appropriate.
Yeah, I'll send him the link to the meeting. He can watch. And if he wants to respond to anything, I can make sure to forward that on to Dr. T and get that on to the board. So.
Perfect.
All right.
Thanks, Vic.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, now we need to.
Do you want that back on the agenda next month or?
Yes, just add it on there.
I feel like we should until we make a
Yeah.
firm decision. Take action one way or the other. Yeah. I think that would be good. Now we need to discuss Carol's departure from the Raccoon River Conference.
Yes, so the superintendents, the activities directors of Raccoon River and along with Carol, has asked to leave the Raccoon River and join the Hawkeye Ten Conference for the next school year. This is just sort of informing you of all that. And then there's a piece that's pending. There's, which if you agree, we would just pass this and say that we agree. And then the only little asterisk that goes with that is that as long as the, I think it's called the conference committee approves it, which is bigger than us. If for some reason they came back and said, no, we're not letting Carol do that, then it would just kind of null and void what we did. But just so you're aware of that piece.
Do we know what Carol's why is?
Size. They just feel like they are just not, they feel like their enrollment is continuing to get smaller and that they feel like they'll be more competitive in that at a conference.
They are a good consequence from the voucher system. I mean, Carol Kemper is just. They are, their enrollment is taking a huge, huge shift.
Yeah, yeah.
All the schools in the state, I think they're one of the tops.
That's true.
So I think it's, yeah, the last two to three years, it's been kind of sad.
We're sorry, I mean, I'll just speak for myself. I'm sorry to see them go in this decision and then also because I really enjoyed the Raccoon River superintendent group and so we'll lose the superintendent too and he's an important part of that team. So, but that's where we are and that's their why.
So this is only a one-year decision or this is permanent decision?
It's permanent for now.
Okay.
They originally wanted to go in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but they sort of were like, why are we waiting? So they just said, would everybody agree to it being twenty-six, twenty-seven? We said as a conference, like, okay, that's fine. And then, and so then the conference committee outside of that will have to agree to that. And then at the same time, the Raccoon, Raccoon River Conference is talking about who we might invite into our conference to make our conference a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
So there's some discussion now about who could we invite to come in to fill their spot, but no decisions on that have been made specifically.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the departure of Carol from the Raccoon River Conference.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Okay. First reading of revised board policies. Big chunk there.
Yep. So this group was either IASB recommendations, just to match like legislation changes. The four hundred series, it was really just us wrapping up our review of that and kind of matching our policy with our practice or our practice with our policy vice versa. So that's just first reading.
And then first reading reviewed board policies.
So those are just ones that we reviewed and didn't make any recommended changes on.
And then first reading rescind board policies.
So the rescinded ones are ones just, that just aren't even used any longer. The one, the board committees exhibit, that was a change from IASB. And then the truancy officer, that's an optional policy and we do not have a truancy officer. So we just need to rescind that one because we don't use that policy.
Thank you, Mindy. And then we talk about the MAG.
By the allowable growth, yes. So this is following the special ed supplement that was due September fifteenth. And so what we found out is that we are special ed deficit increased from last year from seven ninety-nine, four thirty-two to eight forty-five, four four. So what we're doing with this tonight is we are asking for modified allowable growth, so authority, because we've already had the expense, but we didn't have full authority to spend this because it's an overage. So we're asking for the additional spending authority and that's the MAG. And then in order to get our cash, it'll come in April fifteenth with the cash reserve. So we will definitely want to do the cash reserve to a high enough amount when we do our budget on April fifteenth to replenish our cash that this took. So this is the first step. This will give us the authority that we need for this overage and then April fifteenth, we'll do the cash reserve.
Okay. Any questions for Galen? Is there a motion?
And the majority of this, I want to just, um, hang on a second, uh, tuition's out. Kids that we don't educate here, that we commission out.
That we pay to serve.
Yep.
Very positive.
Yes.
So transportation is included in that figure too?
Yes.
Yep, everything, salaries, benefits, transportation, tuition, yes.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Okay. Let me talk about the budget review committee here.
It's another result of the, um, the, this is the certified annual report, EL, EL excess cost. And so for the EL program or the English learners, it used to be ELL, now it's EL, English learners. Um, we, it is a, a formula that we get the additional funding for our students on different, for year one, two, and three. But what happens is we, we keep track of the expenses at the end of the year, or ideal, and then any overage of what the state provides, we have the upper, what the state doesn't provide in additional funding or support for the EL program, we're allowed to ask for the authority for that, similar to the special ed deficit. And that's what this action tonight will do, is give us the spending authority for those additional dollars. And then, again, in order to replenish our cash, we'll have to go and ask for a cash reserve on, at our budget time, on April fifteenth. So another component of the cash reserve to replenish the cash that was over. So if you think about that, that's almost, um, so we spent the money June thirtieth, but we won't actually get the money for another year, basically, it could be eighteen months. So there's quite a lag there, but that's just, but this is the first part of it, just like the special ed deficit.
Okay, you have a motion?
I will motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I guess I should say that it is highly recommended that we do this, because you'll never get the opportunity to get it. We don't want to leave it on the table.
Well, and I mean, you have to spend the cash and the life, so to the authority, it would be-
Right, it should-
Makes sense. Uh, financial reports?
So we have, uh, June thirtieth, financial reports, um, you'll see, um, we had been talking about where we're landing, and so this is very similar to what we see every month. So this is actually where we landed on June thirtieth. And, um, so actual expenditures, uh, we were, our expend, our expenditures were, we were budgeting twenty-two, one, five, four. We actually came in at twenty-two, six, nine, nine, seven, two, zero, so we were anticipating a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss, so we are definitely over, um, and when we trended every month, we were running high, we're running high, and when I went back to, um, to look at a lot of, most of those expenditures happened within the first month or two of the start of the school year, so. And where we found out that, you know, majority of when I, in this report that I included, salaries and benefits are actual, um, for salaries and benefits, we budgeted, you know, we had the budget in there. And, um, where even with the additional TSS funds, for the sec- this is the second year that we have the TSS, but where, um, it ended up being higher is our purchase services, and again, our student tuitions. What caught us off guard is, um, so when I budget for, let's say, tuitions to DMAT classes, I really don't know what that number is, so what I do is basically do an average of the past three years, or at least if, if the year before was higher, well, it's gonna be at least that much. So that's what I would budget for. What we found out is our tuitions, our students were double. We had the double amount of students attending DMAT classes. Which, I, it was, it, and for, I just, Dr. Trillo found out that we asked questions about, there's no limits that we can take. It's, the students have that right. So the unfortunate thing is, we just didn't have extra budget to add to our budget. We had to live within, you know, our budget was set, and we didn't have additional, we were already anticipating a loss of a hundred and fifty thousand. So majority of it is in purchase services, which included tuitions, and our specialized tuitions out was also in. Uh, testing and, um, purchase services for instructional supplies such as, um, we're moving from a lot of software for instruction, and those are multi-year, it's not just a one-time expenditure, those are multi-year commitments, so. That surfaced also when we were doing this. So, um, we also had, um, we had a transfer when the audit, I was the data breach. Um, we, I was running it through the management fund, trying to keep it out of the general fund. Well, the auditors didn't like that, so we had to move it into the general fund, and that was forty-two thousand dollars, so. Um, so those are the things that we tried to capture to try, when we did the investigation of where, where did it happen, what is the detail, and so I include that in on where we landed, to give some idea of.
Gail, on the, the one that says staff training, walk me through what that seventy-two thousand additional is, on instructional staff support. I guess how, I just, how are we so off on that one?
So it basically, um, additional staff training, and also is, um, support services for, I'm gonna say initiatives that we've put in place.
If I may, and so, so support services on those pieces that, Gail, and if I misspeak, Gail, please correct me, but, uh, you know, she'll budget that, and then if you recall, you know, we'll start an initiative, and then that costs extra, and so it was like, well, that part wasn't budgeted, but it was also that, some of that one-time training. So then that should lessen this year as you move forward, um, so that's part of that as well.
We had twenty-six thousand, we had a low number, and just, I mean, that was four, five, four times, and so I was just curious what hit that.
And honestly, the company that I'm thinking of right now, their billing service was something to be desired. Which, a lot of this was actually, should have been part of the year before.
Before, okay.
They kept servicing and saying, we had, it was quite an ordeal, we had to figure out, Carrie didn't, she's not here, but, so a lot of, I don't know, a lot of it, let's say, some of it or most of it should have been the previous year, not that it was, but because of their billing service, we captured it all in one year.
The, the other piece I want to point out, if I may, is that there are things we're already doing and have been doing this year. For example, uh, the one that Gail talked about a little bit with, um, software that we're purchasing. And Carrie already has a group, she did that earlier, or last spring, to say, okay, we have all these, um, software services, apps, are we using them, what does our usage look like, and what's it costing us? And the example I always go to is like Seesaw. Well, everybody at the elementary uses Seesaw, so that's one we want to keep using. If we have one app that we're paying quite a bit of money for, that only one or two people are using, is that the best use of our, you know, what else can we do? So Carrie's done a really nice job of helping streamline things like that. Um, the other one, I was, there was another one I was going to mention, um, like I looked into the DMAT classes, because I was concerned about that, and then I, I said, well, do we have a process where you, okay, you can take a class, and you can take a, you know, and I learned a lot through that process, that checked with other districts, and no, it's, it's, um, in part of state requirements, that if, if kids qualify, they can be a part of the, the DMAT program, so we want to continue to offer that. The telephone, I thought was an interesting one on there, you're like, can't even believe we're having that conversation.
It's expensive, just put it right there.
But, but again, yeah, right, again, to Jason's credit, he saw that and knew that that was, would be a concern, and has already made changes to try to help.
And actually, our last payment to Windstream is November.
There we go, to make that change, yes.
Good job, Jason!
Well done, that in itself is a monumental achievement.
That's right, that's right. So, and then also, um, I wanted, I would like to point out also, um, legal services, that, that's over our typical budget there, so I'd like to point that out. And then also, we're putting things in place, um, already for, um, supplies, and how those purchase orders are approved through our system, and, and putting in a little more, um, just different procedures to make sure that we're staying within that budget, so.
What are we hearing from other districts? I mean, are we, is this in regards to their year-end budgets? I mean, are they way over two, or are they coming, we've heard anything on where they're coming in?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that, I mean, I don't know if you have information, but, but that's exactly, as, um, I was talking to a neighboring superintendent, um, and they're looking at really big things about cor- changing programming. You know, maybe, uh, eliminating, um, big programs, whether maybe it's a band, or orchestra, or something like that, or, you know, it's not us, another district, it's just having those conversations, because absolutely, they're, because you all know, we've been over this many times, about budget is about the personnel. And, um, I will tell you, I don't feel like we're overstaffed in a very large way. Are there places I think we could tweak? Yes, and remember, that's what we've been doing. I don't remember the exact number, Gail, but I, last year it was, was it three hundred, three hundred, four hundred thou- you know, where we trimmed as much as we could for staff through attrition, where it didn't impact programming, and we'll continue to do that.
We have our meeting with Travis.
November seventh.
So that, I assume we're gonna, we're gonna deep dive into that.
I have a, a work session, um, to do, um, we will update all of our numbers for this school year, I hate to say it, twenty-seven. On October, end of the month, on a Wednesday, the last Wednesday in October, I'll go to Des Moines, we'll enter all the information, then we'll use that for our workshop, but, um, we'll have all enrollment numbers, all of our projections, and so we'll have to, um, yeah, we'll have to work on, um, it's, you know, the expense side of becoming efficient as much as we can, and taking the opportunity of, of looking at all opportunities as they come our way.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
And for September, um, the, I'll be working on the budget, so it's basically just the actuals that we're looking at again. The, uh, budget is, I'm going, I need to wait until our enrollment is finalized on the fifteenth, so it's a process. So basically, I've already, um, uploaded our, uh, supply budget, because we did not, uh, increase that up at all. Last year, we took a ten percent across-the-board cut for supplies. So we're on the same budget for this year, so that I rolled that in already. Um, then I had to wait for the September payroll for the salaries to roll in, so that's the next step. And then what I need to know, what I need now is to wait till October fifteenth to see about the enrollment and the tuition numbers, you know, to help me with, um, tuitions in and tuitions out, because those are big numbers. So we want to make sure, uh, when we're lim- working with limited dollar amounts, try to get as close to those numbers as we can. But then with, wherever kids, students, students go in and out, so, but we need to get that as close as we can, and then, um, because we don't have a lot, so if we need it at other places, we can, I'll do that. So that's my next, um, date of October fifteenth, to wait for those numbers. Then, so hopefully by, I don't think I'll have it done by the end of October. Um, we have a, I have, um, fall bed stock, fall beds report due the end of October. And I have auditors coming first week in November, so definitely it is, I'll be working on it, on and off throughout that, so most likely it'll be November, we'll have the numbers, um, of what, uh, the numbers for the new budget for fiscal year twenty-six will be by November.
For a November board meeting?
Uh, no, because that's October.
Got it, so it'll be the December meeting, yeah.
Um, so, but I've included everything that, um, normally, and, um, I do want to talk about, um, so, we had the bond, we had the bond sale, we received the bond, um, revenue, and, um, so what we ended up, I've decided, I kept, um, I kept three months of, uh, three months of, uh, cash on hand for our invoices of, for our construction project. So then, at the end of the, by the time we paid back from the van, and then there was basically just five million dollars that I felt that we wouldn't need for another six months, after having three months on hand for expenses. So, um, I met with Kevin, um, at Available Bank, and, uh, we decided that the best, um, just so we have, um, availability of that, it earns the most, um, I was thinking more of a CD, but that would tie up. Um, they provided, um, we have this in save right now, we have, um, the five million, excuse me, the two-hundred-and-sixty-nine, but we transferred money back. We have what's called a center savings account, which is over about four percent, and the money can come and out, and it's very fluid. So we decided that the remaining five million would just, I just put it in there, and for the return and the flexibility, I thought that was probably the best thing, so that's where we ended up putting it. We are, um, Travis talked to me right after we had the bond sale, and said that they're going to start right into the next series of the GO, um, for the GO bond, I'm not sure exactly, I think it's gonna be around six million. Um, we'll see on that, but we'll be starting up that, another, um, loan, so, rolling right back into it. We, and that would be, you know, of course, the fund for the, the final of the projects for now.
Good work on that.
And anybody have any questions?
Save them all for our November meeting.
I'll sharpen my pencil.
Thanks, Gail.
All right, thank you, Gail. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, any discussion there?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, looking at the calendar, November fourth, school board election and the physical plant and equipment levy renewal. November tenth, six P M regular board meeting, November seventeenth, five-thirty, the board work session with Piper Sandler. Excited for that one. Uh, November nineteenth through the twenty-first is the Iowa School Board Association Annual Convention, and December eighth, organizational meeting. I have a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Good job, Nathan.
Thank you, great job.
Good job, everyone.